To the committee of the whole meeting at Asuas Town Council Tuesday, September the 6th, 2016 at 9:00 AM in council chambers. And welcome to all the people that are here. I just want to say first of all that several of us here have been up at the secondary school and sort of saying, waving and saying welcome to the students that are returning. So we're very happy to have that opportunity to all smile and say welcome back to all the students in Asuas. So we will call the meeting to order and introduction of late items? No, nothing, thank you. So the agenda will be adopted as printed. Okay, could we have, thank you, Rhodes Campbell, all in favor? Thank you. Delegation. And first on our list today is our MLA Linda Larson, who is going to say a few words and talk about UBCM. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Is there anything I can do?
Do you need to have that on?
Do I need it? Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you. And I was very fortunate this morning too to be able to get up to the school and stand there with everybody else. This council was absolutely the sort of centered, stable group that kept this on track. It takes community, but it also takes government to make things happen, and in this case to make the school be open. It's not something that any one group does on its own, but you acted as a very strong central core of this whole process. So congratulations to you as well for maintaining that calmness in the middle of a storm, if we want to call it that. And the end result is that we were, by working together, able to do something really good here. So good on you for that. So the UBCM, basically what I'm more need from you rather than me give to you is that I need to know what your primary issues will be at the UBCM, who you've requested meetings with, so that I can track them, though I do get a copy once it's finally printed and so on. I need to know what's your most important item on the list in case there's a conflict and so I can make sure I'm there when you're talking to a minister. Quite often there is, the UBCM, for some people in some communities, they think, oh my goodness, this is, you know, it's a waste of time and so on, you know, you only get to see the minister for 15 minutes and so on. Believe me, it is worth it. They need to see your face and that type of familiarity, in the long run, is what gets your item recognized and moved to the top. If you don't have the faith in what it is you're asking for to actually put your face to it, government has got a whole bunch of other people who are happy to put their faces to their issue and be there speaking to them. So I'm pleased that I gather Sue, you're going, and that Jim is going to be there. It's really, really important. And like I say, it's, there's always a cost involved, but if you are going for millions of dollars for your community, it's worth the cost. Okay? So I would like to know more from you, what your biggest focus will be, like which ministers you want to speak to, and what the, sort of the number one ask or number one topic for you. Sometimes it's not an ask, sometimes it's a change of regulation or something that you need to have happen to make life easier here in Asuas. So I'll turn it over to you for that. Take my notes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Romanco, could you explain how this process works and where we're at?
Okay. Well, we've submitted actually four ministerial meeting requests. We prioritize them based on the, you know, based on the criteria that has been provided in terms of the UBCM. And with council's permission, I can go through the individual meeting requests and then perhaps council could add to it or there'd be some questions. The first, the first two meeting requests, the first priority was to meet with the premier and the second meeting request was to meet with the Minister of Education. And the subject matter was very similar. Certainly, the closure of the school was top of mind. Certainly, an expression of gratitude for the funding that did come across and save our school, but there was also a concern of council relative to process and regulation that enabled this particular situation to occur. And, you know, the fact that our school is going to remain open for two years based on a funding program that's going to be announced, the future of that funding program certainly would be a topic of discussion. The second area of council concern was the regulatory regime, the Department, the Education Act, and the Education Act governing school closure. And council would like to see some renovations to the act in this particular area. The two suggestions, because council not only asks, but is going to provide suggestions in around a time period for consultation, more clear guidelines in around what consultation is. And finally, an ask for regulatory review relating to the majority vote that governs school closures on a regional basis. Right now, it is a simple majority. The sense of council is that that needs to be reviewed to perhaps a two-thirds majority or some other number that will not post communities against each other. And a simple majority simply does not work in a regional basis. Along with discussions in the governance environment perhaps would be also the role of school boards and how they communicate with municipal governments, the, how they view their position in community versus regional context. So it's a broad, sweeping type of discussion on the whole, what happened with the school closure. And we feel that it's an important enough issue that it needs to be approached, not only with the Minister of Education, but the premier as well.
So that's one of the topics for the premier as well?
That's, yeah, yeah.
Did you request 30 minutes with the Minister of Education or just the 15?
I didn't see anything that would allow us to have a broader amount of time.
Okay, I'm going to just check into that because I'd like you to have a little longer time.
You know that the RDOS has also got this on their agenda?
Yes.
It is possible then that the, that, you know, the combination?
Might get combined, yeah.
Because it's the same, really, the same issue. I'm not sure whether that would work or not.
Okay, I will check that. All right, thank you.
So I don't know if the council wants to add anything to that or should I?
I just want to say that the Vancouver province, and I believe the Sun today as well, has an article, a picture, because I get it online, so I look in the morning. There's a picture of three students at the Asuas Secondary School and quite an article. So Asuas schools are still front and center. And that's, that's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
And we think that, we really feel that this was, this school and the way this town reacted to all the people in the town, the businesses, the parents, the teachers, the kids, the, you know, town leaders, that, that really sort of urged it on. And I think we were sort of front and center. I was telling the rest of them that my cousin who lives in Ottawa emailed me in the middle of the summer, or June or something, and said, I just heard you on CBC, heard me. And he would have recognized, of course, the name. And it was about the Asuas school. So it's reached a ton of people, this issue, and I think that that's been a good thing. And I think that there are other schools in the province, absolutely, that are sort of in the same boat. But somehow, Asuas and all of the people who got mobilized and worked, I mean, it's evidence this morning, isn't it, of the people that were up there at the school? That really, we think spurred things on. And so this is why this request is so important, not only with the premier, but with the education minister. And so we'd like, we would like to have you there too, Linda, if that's possible.
Yeah, I do try to track them. It did raise the one issue that had never been talked about before when it came to rural communities, and that was economics.
Yes.
And that this is the first time that the economy of a community was ever put on the table. And I think that's the trigger.
Yeah.
It wasn't all the other stuff. It was the economy of a community that was the major trigger here. And that is evident throughout the province in other small communities.
Right.
And it's part of what I'm tracking right now.
Good.
And going around the province and talking to different small communities about, so, and school boards, I appreciate the fact that you've got a lot of issues there regarding what they do and so on, but, you know, they, basically, it's not in their mandate as they state very clearly. And yet, they would not exist if there wasn't an economy.
Yes.
So it's kind of a catch-22, you know? And I think it does need to be on the table as part of...
Needs to be brought up, for sure.
Yeah.
Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I think it's really, really, really important that we keep the conversation about process going and not focus on just the result only. Certainly, it's a result that we were, we were happy ended the way it did, but there certainly is a lot of questions. CAO Romanco brought up one being the simple majority, you know, put trustees in a position too that, that nobody should have to be in. But I think when we look at the entire process from communication to genuine intent, I think that that conversation needs to continue and be in the spotlight rather than the results.
Yeah, good. Okay, so three and four. Yeah.
So priority number three was a, was a meeting with the Minister of Finance. This meeting specifically was being asked to discuss the benefits of the resort municipality program. The council was very aware that Minister Bond is directly involved with this program. However, given the need to cast a wider lobby and get a better understanding for decision makers, it was suggested to all 14 resort municipality communities that they request meetings with the Minister of Finance. Because the Minister of Finance has a very important role in this particular program, which comes to an end on March 31st of 2017.
Did you guys ask as a group of 14?
Well, CAO Romanco and I are attending meetings, resort municipality meetings, all day on the Monday.
Okay.
With, so all the CAOs and the mayors will be there and we do meet with Minister Bond. And we really, and there's been a, what was it? They kind of looked at, a group was hired to look at what the pluses and minuses were, mostly pluses, and why this should continue forward. So that is being presented, that report.
Yeah, can you give me that Monday schedule when you get it? Thank you.
The, I guess the direction was that the 14 communities ask individually so that, you know, every community has its opportunity to express its value added of the program. And the Minister of Finance may be invited to the Monday presentation.
He said 14 people asking him to, you know, for meetings, he might come to that.
Yeah, I was just thinking that would be far more effective, you know, with the 14 resort municipalities in the room. And certainly from a time constraint for him, so much better, so...
That's possibly on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, and as the mayor informed you earlier, that, that meeting request was denied by the Minister of Finance.
Yeah.
Well, not by the minister, by the staff.
Right, okay. I'll follow up on that one too, just to make sure that somewhere in that process there's...
And finally, the last meeting request was with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. Two topics of discussion included the illegal highway signage between Oliver and Asuas, actually Oliver and the border. And the, the process was initiated several years ago to manage this. The process was stopped and what council sees is a continued proliferation of those signs. And I noticed actually this weekend, four more very large business signs go up promoting one particular business. So they continue, they will continue, and the strong feeling of council, both councils, Oliver and Asuas, when it was discussed at the inter-council meeting, as this takes away from the, the presentation of the region relative to, you know, its tourism look, also is a safety issue and will only get worse. And so the, if transportation would, you know, start this process again, then the regional district would be also be on the center stage to implement their sign by law to take away third-party signage as well. The Ministry of Transportation has a very good highway signage program. The councils wanted to see this program succeed. And it's not succeeding with all these other signs along the highway. So that was one area of discussion. The second area of discussion is a planned downtown revitalization project by the town and also a storm sewer project for Main Street. Ministry of Transportation by policy contributes 50% of storm water management funding. We see that we're probably going to be looking, we've been in discussions with the ministry for almost two years now. The engineering has been reviewed by the Ministry of Transportation and it's got an informal approval to the engineering aspect of it. So we just want to ensure that there is a planned management of this project, that there are funding available from the Ministry of Transportation. There's also some, been some discussion about repaving of the Main Street. So we don't want to rip up new pavement.
No, dig it up all at once.
So we, again, it's a matter of bringing this as a, as a priority project for budgeting so that we can, once we have this ideally targeted for budget, then we can, administrations can continue to plan in terms of all the other aspects of it. So both budgeting at our end and, but certainly the 50% funding is important, is important. Also, looking at some safety improvements as well, pedestrian safety improvements on the Main Street while we're also looking at the, at this project.
Okay. Just, if it's all right, so just back to the signage one. Of course, that's been an ongoing thing and the regional district has been kind of the main push on that for quite a number of years. I talked to Transportation about this just a week or two ago and the, and basically their responsibility obviously is the right-of-way, okay? The width of the right-of-way, it has to be cleared of all signs. And the other thing is visual, not as, from a safety perspective. So even if the sign is not in the right-of-way, if it somehow impedes the ability to see around a corner or whatever, then they also have some authority in that end. So I'm not sure how much of the signage is actually in their physical right-of-way or whether it's just more the size of it on the private property is causing an impediment for sight and safety, which they may not have pursued, you know, too much. But that is their job. Their job is the safe, it has to be safe. So I'm not sure, Barry, with the, with the signage, like even you said, the new signage that's gone up just recently, is it on private property? Because we're talking nothing but regional district authority.
I think it's on highway.
Yes, I think it's, you know, and then, not to speak for council, but from the discussions, it was if, if there was significant movement by MOT to take the signage off of the right-of-ways, that would provide some influence and direction to the regional district to then deal...
Yeah, and I certainly support getting out of the right-of-ways and certainly from a safety perspective, anything, you know, I'm, the signage is kind of a catchphrase. It's, it's one of those things that's kind of unique to the area. So, you know, it's part of the culture or whatever you want to call of the entire South End here. But it, it has gone beyond just being kind of neat and different, you know? So without a doubt, it has got past that point. And, but certainly from a safety perspective and anything in the right-of-way, I certainly will bring that up as well myself to the, the actual manager of the South End here.
Okay, so I was also at a meeting, a couple of them this summer, about Highway 3 Coalition and Toda and the Kootenay Rockies people were also there. This was brought up because the minister or somebody in charge of highways, and I believe, and I don't remember his name, but I think he's from Nelson, and he's looking at this whole area. So we did discuss this at some length because that's another meeting that, that I'm, I'm going to down at UBCM, the Highway 3 Coalition, because they're quite a gung-ho group.
Yes.
It's a crow's nest highway from Hope to the Alberta border. And we're looking at trying to encourage tourism, but that also includes signage and we want to have the Minister of Highways on board with that as well. So lots of things. One more thing is that we have, excuse me, requested a meeting with, is it Minister of Health? And I believe it's with Oliver.
Oh, I hear you.
Oliver put in, yes, the request and that, so they have requested the meeting, but it was to include Asuas as well.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, just so you'll probably get that from them.
Yeah, I'll get that one too. Thank you very much.
Okay.
And those, those are the meeting requests that went in.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
So we just need to now hear back whether we, yeah, whether we're going to, so we, there's three of them then, plus the one from Minister of Health, so that's four that we would go to.
Yeah, all right.
Any other, any other points anybody would like to make or questions? Carol, go ahead.
Thanks. Hopefully you'll deal with Minister of Finance. It was denied, but hopefully we'll get a chance to.
Yeah, I will. I'll, I'll talk to Minister Bond and suggest that she try to get him there for 15 minutes or half an hour to those meetings. And then everybody will be in the room at the same time, more from a perspective of listening to, you know, what's going on and what the request is and the value. And I think certainly from his perspective, that would be an awful lot easier for him as well. So I will, we will send in, I'll talk to Minister Bond.
Okay.
Okay?
Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Linda, just one thing about the resort municipality component, just, just to make sure that it's not all about the continuance of it, there is also going to be an expression of gratitude for what has been done in our community so far. And that's why we felt it is important to have a meeting from our community and all of the other ones, because the gratitude part of it is something that we don't often get to do and, you know, showing that appreciation. And we're also having that celebration on the 14th of this month as well.
Yes, I'll be here.
And we've invited those, those ministers as well, so there's also that part of it as well.
Yeah, no, and that's super important. And you wouldn't believe the number of areas that are, that knock on my door and say, we want to be resort municipality. And, and of course, the, you know, I mean, there's some pretty big players, like Big White, for instance, you know? And some of these, and, yeah, so you're, you're very...
Sun Peaks got it, so I guess that's why.
But I think it's because their volume of population got big enough, right? And so that they qualified. But yes, so it's a wonderful program. It's worked incredibly well. And good that you're going to approach it from both angles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We will certainly push because we feel it's really, really important for our town, so we'll do whatever we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just might add for the whole area.
Yeah, yeah.
Our money spills over to Oliver Costin and Karen Miss hugely.
It's huge.
Regional district, yeah.
It's kind of the center of that hub of tourism and so on that happens. So, yeah, we are very, very pleased to be that close, all of the, all of my riding, you know?
That's right.
Well, not quite all of it, but close enough. That's basically what I can enforce it, except that if you, my next meeting's not for another half hour, so if you don't mind, I'd love to listen to what the Work BC has to talk about.
Open door group, yes. Absolutely. Please, please stay. Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
No, it's okay, I don't, I don't...
And we certainly look forward to having you join us on the 14th here.
Yes, I will be here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So our next delegation is, is the employment program of BC. And this would be Melanie Guza, who's the program director, and Donelda Wood, who is the...
Job developer.
Job developer. There you go. Thank you, ladies, for coming. Please go ahead.
So it's good? Can you hear me? I just want to thank Mayor McCordough and council, thank you for having us here today. I know some of you are probably familiar with the Work BC. We have an office here in Asuas and we have one in Oliver as well. And I just wanted to just kind of go through some of the services that we offer in hopes that you can share this with employers who are looking for employees as well as anybody that you know that's looking for work or looking for retraining or looking for kind of making a plan for their future. And I also want to highlight, this month, September, is Disability Awareness Month. So all Work BC centers throughout BC are highlighting inclusive hiring practices, hiring people with disabilities, and recognizing employers that have contributed to diverse hiring practices. So just a little bit about the Work BC Center. So we're accessible, we're inclusive, we're responsive, we are open to all job seekers and all employers in the area. And our focus is to help people find employment, whether it's, you know, seasonal employment, which is really huge in this area, or looking for some more sustainable employment. And we help people, help them to get a job as quickly as possible and help employers to find staff as quickly as possible. We work in partnership with a variety of different employers in order to deliver the employment program of BC. So it might be a little bit confusing, but Open Door Group, we are the company that holds the contract for the employment program of BC. And we work in partnership with Bowman Employment Services as well as SOIN, South Okanagan Women in Need Society, and Community Futures Okanagan-Samhailkamine. So we offer a variety of programs. We serve specialized populations. So SOIN's is one of our providers that works with women who are survivors of violence and abuse. Community Futures, they help with people that are looking at possibly self-employment. So we work with them and they offer support in business plan development. And then Bowman Employment Services, their roots are kind of in working with people that are going into retraining and wage subsidies, which are clients that have been on EI. So we all work together to provide the employment program of BC. We do serve all specialized populations, so we do have specialized services for immigrant populations, for youth, Aboriginal, persons with disabilities, franker bones. And also what we're really focusing on is how we can serve and help people that are in rural and remote areas. There's a lot of unique challenges for our job seekers in this area, transportation, housing, so there's different things that we have to look at in order to help people find sustainable employment. Like I said, we support, help people that are survivors of violence or abuse with reentry into the workplace and persons with multiple barriers. One thing that we're really focused on is trying to understand the, the needs of the local labor market. So, you know, our Resource Center does have a lot of up-to-date information on different labor market trends, on job postings. And one thing that we've just started last year is a local employment advisory skills panel, I think that's what it is. And we invite local employers, educational institutes to get together and meet with us so that we can actually find out what their unique needs are. We want to make sure that we are up to date with, you know, some of the challenges that employers are facing with hiring, maybe some of the needs, skill gaps, so that we can really help those people that are coming in to meet the needs of our local area. So if anyone is interested in being involved in that committee, they can connect with myself or Donelda, and I believe there's some contact information. We only meet twice a year, but it's really so that we can get a better pulse on what's Our Resource Center, anybody can come into the Resource Center, so we have one here in Asuas and one in Oliver. We've got job postings up there, we've got computers... We've got job postings up there, we've got computers, we've got help with resumes, cover letters, interview skills. So anyone can just come into the Resource Room and access that. But we also have more specialized services where you would meet with a case manager and you can really work one-on-one with your, you know, your own unique goals and interests and really kind of figure out a plan to help you achieve employment. So lots of people that maybe haven't been in the workforce for a while, maybe parents that are trying to get back to work, or people that have had health issues or disabilities, you know, they can meet with a case manager one-on-one and come up with a plan to get back to work. Again, this talks a little bit about our Resource Center, what we have. And I just want to highlight that we are there for job seekers as much as we're there for employers. So if any employers are experiencing any kind of challenges with hiring or they just need a little bit of assistance, we're there to support them just as much as we're here to support job seekers. And one thing that we are going to be having this, well, I don't know if we're going to have it this month, but for Disability Awareness Month, we're going to be hosting a workshop for employers on inclusive hiring practices, kind of speaking to the business case for hiring people with disabilities and how it's a win-win for both the job seeker and the employer and the community as a whole. Skip this one, I just kind of spoke to it. So this talks about some of the specialized or some of the services that we do offer. But I also want to just highlight some of the benefits to employers. We offer wage subsidies, so if a client or a job seeker is looking at getting back to work and they might need a little bit of extra support, they might need a little bit of training on the job, we can offer a wage subsidy where we would subsidize up to 50% of the employer's wages for up to six months to kind of help with that transition period. And the goal is that that person would continue to work, but it just kind of helps, kind of takes some of the time pressures and training off of the employer with that wage subsidy. We also have job placement and follow-up services, so we will work with job seekers. And Donelda is one of our amazing job developers. She will actually go out in the community and market on behalf of a client, speak to the employers and try to help that person get placed. She also works with employers who say, hey, you know, I need somebody for this position or I'm really struggling, I need somebody with these, with this skill set. And then she can bring that back into the center and we can try and help to find that employer, someone to fill that position. I spoke a little bit to this, but it's, it's the personalized employment planning that's really beneficial. So, you know, anyone can come into the Resource Room, but it's coming in a meeting with a case manager and really getting that one-on-one support and coming up with an action plan on how to find employment. We do have a variety of different strategies with the wage subsidy just being one of them on how we can help people get back to work. Workshops, of course, we've got some pretty amazing workshops, workshops available in Oliver and Osuyas. And they can cover anything from career planning. We have one workshop, it's called Implicit Career Search, and it's a really, it's kind of a really cool workshop and it helps people that, you know, really don't know what they want to do to really kind of look at, you know, what their values and their, and their interests and kind of what their core is, and it kind of helps them to figure out what might be a good employment goal for them. We also have workshops on how to, how to get a job and how to keep a job. And we take feedback from employers who say, you know, these are some of the struggles and challenges I have. And we try to prepare our job seekers to be prepared and be good employees. We also have the ability to support people with training, so we do have money available to support those people that meet the criteria for retraining. So whether it's occupational skills training, whether it's short-term training, we can help people get back into the workforce. There are some eligibility requirements, they have to have been on EI or some people will have to have been on income assistance, and there are some criterias, but we do provide skills training. We've had some really good successes with people that have gone into KRA training, LPN and, and admin, just to, just to name a few. So, you know, if you do know anyone that's interested in looking at retraining, it has to be based on a need rather than a want, but that is something that we can support people with. Specialized services, so just to kind of highlight some of the customized employment services we offer, in your package, there is a little bit of information on hiring for people with disabilities, and this sheet actually is called Hiring for Abilities. So I think it's very fitting for this month with it being Disability Awareness Month that all employers in Osuyas and in the area are aware of, you know, hiring people with disabilities or diverse abilities, as we sometimes like to refer. It's not, it's not going to make things challenging, it's not going to make things difficult. And we want you to know that there is a lot of benefits and a lot of positive for both the job seeker and, and the employer when you hire people with diverse abilities. So this sheet just kind of speaks to some of the myths or some things that people might say, you know, I don't want to hire somebody with a disability because of this or that, but I would encourage you to read through it. And also in our Resource Centers for the month of September, we're going to have disability awareness displays up. So if anybody wants to come by and check it out, we've got some great success stories. Donelda's really had some awesome placements. We work with a couple of really great clients who we've placed and, you know, if you want to come in and see their success stories, that actually makes our job, that's what we do it for, right? It's those successes. As well with Disability Employment Month, we do, you know, we do have, there's a website that you can check out. And, you know, the whole purpose of this month is to celebrate people with disabilities in the workforce and employers and resources in the community who pave the way to support them. So one other thing that we're doing is we're actually going to give some awards to local employers just to let them know that we really appreciate their diverse hiring practices. So we're going to be doing some awards, there's some employers here in Osuyas as well as in Oliver, and we'll also be putting those in the paper for people to see those employers that have really been supporting a diverse workforce. So this just speaks a little bit more, I kind of highlighted, but we also have, so we talked about the wage subsidy financial supports. Also, people that are struggling maybe to have clothing for interviews or they're struggling with, you know, transportation, we do have a variety of financial supports available for people who are looking for work. So if that's a barrier for them, getting places or just having the proper work clothing as well, you know, that's something that we can support them with if they come into the Resource Center and they can just find out about how they sign up to do that. So how do people get started? Anyone can just come into the Resource Center. The Osuyas one here, it's a satellite office. Under this contract, we have a main office in Oliver, which is open five days a week. And here in Osuyas, we have a satellite office, which is open Monday, Tuesday, and Friday. So anyone can just come in, access the Resource Center. And then if they're interested in getting a little bit more one-on-one support, then they just need to fill out some paperwork and they register to meet with a case manager. And we're located here in Osuyas in the, by, what do we buy?
The red apple.
The red apple. I was going to say curves, because I'd always say curves, but it's not there anymore. But it's just when you come into town, that's where we're located. And I would really encourage you to come in and check out our center with, if you can't come in in September, to kind of see some of the disability stuff that we're highlighting, to come and check it out anytime. As well, we do have some different programs called, one of them is called a Job Creation Partnership, and the other one is called a Project-Based Labor Market Training. So if there is a project in the community that you identify needs to be completed and you're looking for workers, you can connect with us and we can kind of go through that process. And we can provide workers to help complete that project. And the people that we would recommend are those people that need to gain some skills, maybe haven't been working. So it is kind of a really neat project and that's something that you guys might want to just think about if there are any kind of community-based projects to connect with us, and we can discuss that a little bit more. Anything else? No, I just, I just want to say thank you for having us in, and we're just really trying to get our name out there. We've been here for four years and there's still people that say, oh, I didn't know where you were. And also just to let people know that we're not just here, some people think that we're here just to support kind of those seasonal jobs, the pickers that come through, but really we have those long-term case management services to help people to get back to work or look at more sustainable employment that's year-round.
Well, thank you very much, Melanie and Donelda, for presenting this, and it certainly gives a good look at, at what you do. And I've known bits and pieces of it certainly through Donelda, but, but this is, we certainly appreciate you coming in and letting us know. Can I ask a question? How involved were you in, in hiring practices or getting workers for the corrections center? Because I understand that they haven't hired all the people that they needed.
Yeah.
And is that part of your job?
Yeah, Donelda might be able to speak to that a bit, but we do have, we are connected with Steve DeCastri. He's the ward in there and he does let us know about postings that are available. So we did help with supporting in the, in the corrections center, so we really had that information in our Resource Room. We helped to prepare people for those correction jobs. But right now, it's kind of the support service jobs that they're looking at hiring for. And so as far as I know, he keeps us in the loop of, you know, when they're looking for postings, he shares them with us and we put them up in the Resource Center. Don't know if there's anything else to add to the corrections center.
There is some different components within the corrections center, so he's handling part of it. But things like medical services are contracted to somebody else, dietary or someone else again. So it's just getting that, those contacts with those contractors so then you can get the postings from them as well.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Rhodes and then Counselor Youngberg.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Well, great presentation. I think I learned an awful lot already. I have a kind of a general question. What's your experience in our community right now? Is there more jobs or more people looking for jobs or, or the reverse of that? Is there, do you have a sense of that in our community?
Yeah, I think, you know, and Donelda, she's kind of really on the floor out there working with the employers and the job, and the job seekers. I definitely know that this summer, with a lot of the seasonal jobs and the picking jobs, there was a lack of people available to pick. I know that that was a bit of a struggle. And there's a variety of factors. I mean, a lot of people just didn't come back this year and, yeah.
We were also picking earlier this year.
Do you want to come up, Donelda, so you can speak into the microphone too? Thanks.
I have an allergy to microphones. So just to speak to that, because the crops were ready earlier this year, some pickers came too late. So, you know, there is a variety of reasons why that whole season went that way. But overall, I would say, other than the picking jobs, it's pretty much balanced, but it's about the skill set that some people are looking for. And we have employees or potential employees who need to upgrade their skills in order to fill some of the positions as well.
Okay. Counselor Youngberg?
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough, and thank you to Work BC and yourselves for all the work. We've used your services once and I just wanted to add to the overall project that we used Jim King and Desert Park, and we had a huge success out of that operation. As well as we've also went down and I think we did work with a worker of yours, Elaine Keller, and got some help from you for that project that we were on downtown. So it does work and it's a very effective program. I just don't think we use it to the fullest. And I'd really like to see skilled people improve their, their skills so they are able to be employed. Because that's one of the areas I think we have, we have in Osuyas for sure, as well as housing. But there's a few of us working on this housing issue, so we're going to see if we can get something organized for next year because it does seem to be a real issue with every employer.
Yeah. And, and the more feedback that we can get from, you know, everyone about what they're looking for, right, and what skill sets are important, and, because we do have people that come in that maybe have moved here or people that haven't been working for a while or for whatever reason they need a career change. So the more that we know what the community and the labor market needs and wants, the better we can prepare job seekers.
Very good point.
Okay. Well, thank you very much to both of you because this has been an eye-opener not only for us, but for the community, because this will be on Granica, so hopefully people will see it and come in and ask questions and use your services. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us.
Okay, so we have nothing else on the agenda here, so we need a motion to adjourn. I'll go this side this time. Youngberg, King, all in favor. Thank you very much, everyone.